Okay, I've got seven o'clock. Why don't we call this meeting ordered? This is the zoning board for the village of Webster. We have one item today is January 17th. We have one item on our agenda tonight. Before I read through that, everybody has the new minutes from the last meeting. What I'd like to do is see if anybody's had a chance to read them. I note that there is at least one, and I don't know whether to call it an addendum in there, written in.
That'll be in the official minutes.
Okay, there we go.
I just didn't want to recopy all of them.
So what we've got out here is the meeting minutes from the last meeting. Someone present at the last meeting should be able to make a motion to amend or approve them as written.
I was going to make a motion to approve the written building services. So you change it?
Right at the top. Take it right at the top. We wrote in Trustee Lauer. She's going to make the official minutes. We'll add that. Put it in there. Not around us. So as we have them.
It's written right here.
All right, we have a motion to approve them as written. Second, here, on paper. Aye, opposed? None, very good. As delivered to us. All right. Tonight we have one item on the agenda. I'm going to read through it. Nixon Peabody, representing Bell Atlantic Mobile Systems of Allentown. I think that's Pennsylvania. There you go. Allentown Incorporated doing business as Verizon Wireless. The applicant seeks to install a 37 foot, seven inch tall wireless telecommunications facility located at 70 Barrett Drive, what commonly is referred to as the Knights of Columbus. They've got the tax ID in there. You're seeking relief from the zoning regarding location of the antenna from property lines pursuant to village code listed 17526C, 428C2, property in zone West End Business. Who is going to be speaking on behalf? What I'd ask you to do is just come up here, tell us who you are, tell us who you're speaking on behalf, tell us why you're seeking relief from the current zoning framework and why there's no other option for you in this area.
Ladies and, or I guess I should just say gentlemen of the board, Jared Lusk with the law firm Nixon Peabody, I'm the one that prepared the application in front of you. I'm going to assume for a moment that you've all had the opportunity to read the application here, so I won't go line by line through it.
Thank you.
But as you, as you know, from the application, particularly tab F of the application, there's an RF report describing the need of the problem. And Verizon's existing South Webster site located at 1073 Webster Road and its, what's known as its Webster site located at 1005 Picture Parkway are both operating at capacity or beyond, meaning there's more, more traffic on this network than these, these facilities can handle. And so Verizon has undergone a project in the town and village of Webster to provide capacity with these little antennas that are approximately the size, about two feet tall, about the size of a five gallon pail that are installed at various locations throughout the area covered by these existing sites to take traffic from that area in the immediate vicinity of the, the new antennas will then be covered by those antennas rather than traveling to the existing towers to be serviced. In doing so, it creates indirectly additional capacity on the existing towers. So they've been strategically located throughout the town and village to, to provide coverage from specific areas in this area of, of the Webster Columbus Center property. There is a large apartment, there's an apartment, Catholics and some offices, et cetera, in that area that generate traffic. And this antenna will be designed to grab that traffic from that area in particular as well along the main highway and again thereby relieving the existing facilities that are over capacity. Before I get into the details of the project itself, does anybody have any questions on the general purpose of why we're doing what we're doing in this area? So Verizon went out to this area to try to locate a facility. As you may know from reading your wireless code, a wireless telecommunications facility needs a special use permit from the zoning board and following review and recommendation by the planning board. We were here on January 3rd in this room with the planning board and they unanimously recommended on a vote of four to zero for, to approve the special use permit based on the application materials, the need for the project. In addition to the special use permit, we are seeking a variance from the typical setback variance for wireless telecommunications facilities found in your code. The code itself requires a 40-foot setback and this is not a typical utility structure that you would see. It's really a utility structure that's often, if you think about our typical neighborhoods, located right immediately on property lines, often between, between properties, you'll see electric utility lines between property lines. And the reason why they, they do that generally is to sort of maximize the utility of the property being serviced so that they don't break up the, the, the practical utility of building lots by placing utility poles in the middle of the lot. Here, although we're approximately 10 feet from the property line, if you were to, to look at the overhead view of the property, we are essentially, and I'll just, if you allow me to approach.
Please.
This is the existing Columbus Center property and we're looking to put it in this back corner out of the way from the other, in this area. There's an existing, I want to call it modular facility here in some dumpsters and things. Putting it in the back corner so that it doesn't bother anyone. If you were trying to meet the setback in this area, again, pointing to the area, this thing would end up being either in the middle of this facility or be in the middle of the lawn. Just practically speaking, doesn't make sense when so many other utility structures are, are located right on the property lines. And so we're trying to put it in a place that for all intents and purposes makes the most sense if you were going to place a 35-foot utility pole, put it in the back corner sort of by the dumpster and by the modular trailer. Again, in doing so, we're only approximately 10 feet from the line. But again, this is the same type of structure that you would see with any R G and E utility pole that's along the property lines that's designed the same way with the same structural capacity. So again, the reason why we're proposing it is just that practical basis. The need for the project is outlined and compliance with the special use permit and the requirements of the code are set forth in exhibit D. I've gone through each one of them, showed you how the project applies with your requirements, again, except for this 40-foot setback. Once you look at this, you understand why we're seeking the 40-foot variance in the standard for granting a variance here is not the typical area variance standard that you apply. It's the standard that's applied to a public utility, which is if you demonstrate the need for the project and you need to put it where you've placed it, we're entitled to relief from the code. I will say that by placing it where you require it, we're in the middle of somebody's modular trailer or dumpster and so we're trying to put it in the most practical location to still deliver service to the area. But again, most of it is driven by just the practicality of the site and what we're actually installing. Your code, until your new code is adopted, which I've seen a draft, draft doesn't really contemplate small cell installations. It contemplates the big macro towers that you, that you have that are referenced on Publishers Parkway, et cetera.
Okay. Go ahead, Larry.
Yeah. So thanks, excuse me for this for a second. So.
Before, before you start, let me interrupt you. Can you give us a little bit of background? There was a statement in his presentation that says he's entitled to relief from the code. Does that mean this is done and there isn't anything we can do about it? So then I'd ask why we are here.
Well, you're here for two reasons because you have to grant the special use permit from the zoning board.
Got that.
You're irrespective of whether there's a variance.
Okay.
And Jared's correct, the standard for a public utility, just like if R G and E were coming in and they wanted to erect a utility pole somewhere, it's not the usual, you know, five factors or criterias for an area variance. If they can establish a need, then you basically, you know, the, the public benefit of the utility, because, you know, utilities are quasi-public in nature, you know, everybody needs them. So it's a, it's a much lower threshold, a lower standard to grant the variance. But you could still, you could say, nah, you, there's absolutely no need for this, but it's kind of the opposite of a, it's not really that there's a gap in coverage. They're, they're trying to, you know, they, there's coverage issues. It sounds like other places in the town and the village, and this is a way to alleviate it by these smaller cells rather than putting up a bigger cell, cell tower somewhere else that more people would complain about than this 37 and a half, 37-foot tall pole.
Okay. Thank you. Go ahead, Larry.
So, so the questions that I have would be something like, if you've had a 65% increase in need or of use, is that going to continue, that in just the last year going to 217, is that going to continue and are you going to be coming back to us again and again and again to put up these type of structures to alleviate the problem?
The answer to that question, the first question is yes. We don't see any, every time somebody goes and buys a car that has, that has any self-driving techniques or any appliances that, for example, there's apparently refrigerators. I don't know why anybody in their right mind would order, but if you get a refrigerator and you hook it up to the internet and when the milk, the milk sensor gets below a certain weight, it orders milk for you automatically, that those things are on the market. Self-driving cars are going to require the use of the internet. All of the internet of things, every time you, how many devices in your home, you know, are connected to the internet, how many, connected, no matter what application they're using. Some, some people walk around two or three phones. There's iPads, there's your, there's your, there's your, your televisions now are hooked into the internet. As many of those things keep going on and then we're downloading whatever it is we're downloading, whether it be movies or whatever. It used to be we were just doing phone calls and then text messages came. That's the least of the demand on the system now. So the answer is yes, we don't see any reason to think that the growth's not going to continue. The question then becomes, will we need to be back into the village and town of Webster? I would say this, there's so many towns and villages throughout upstate New York that need this additional capacity that we're describing. Webster's getting its project now. They're getting, I think there's five total projects in, in the town and village of Webster right now. The, the chance of Verizon coming back to Webster before it hits the other municipalities to get that, I think is, is probably slim. Again, depends on the demand of the network and every, and every month, the engineers from Verizon look at their network and say, where's the most demand? So I think probably if demand's growing, will they attack it, that that continued growth here with more? I would assume probably in the future. How soon in the future? I don't know. There's a lot of other places that, that are in the same position Webster is right now that we're fixing and they'll be back that, that don't have even the first small cell. So I think you're going to, you're going to see that in the future, but I don't know where Webster would be in the priority list since they're getting a large investment right now. Does that answer your question?
So the short answer is yes. And so some of these, you know, I can see where the, it may be necessary. I mean frankly, to know if my garbage can is full or not is really kind of irrelevant. You know, I mean, when I was growing up, the old man would say, go clean out the garbage can. And I get that. But there are some things that are more relevant, obviously tracking and patients that are, are disabled, et cetera, whatever. There's a technology and this is maybe a question that can't be answered. This is changing so dramatically and so quickly, this, you know, just you gave some numbers. Is the technology in the vision to make this, you know, I mean, it may be that everybody has a little one of these cell sites and, you know, they carry it with them.
The answer to that is 5G is going to be very interesting. You've probably heard on the television, 5G H E, they're 5G E. Is that what they, I don't know what they're, I don't know what the hell that is, 5G E. Verizon's doing 5G. It's, it's, the, the problem with 5G and 4G, well, let me go back to the beginning of time when the first, remember when I was a younger kid and cell phones still came out and they had bags and they were in a car and it was, it was a big deal then. They would put a cell phone, a cell tower every five miles, maybe every 10 miles. And they were tall, 250-foot towers with the big lights on them and they would, and they would broadcast the signal all over the place. And two things, you know, that was what we call 850 megahertz, 800 megahertz, at least in Verizon's case, technology. And so when we think about 800 megahertz, you think of a wave sort of like, like this, for example. And that would float around for a little while and there weren't that many people using phones, so it could cover sort of all the, all the people in that two mile or one mile radius around the, the tower that needed a call. And so then more and more people got phones and our engineer has told me from Verizon that on each, on each tower, there's three sectors, right? Alpha, you know, three, three source sectors of antennas that point in collectively 360 degrees from the, from the antenna. And each one of those sectors can handle about 400, he calls it data events since most of the calls are digital now, but phone calls, text messages, downloads, can, each one of those sectors can handle approximately that number of events. As more and more people got phones, obviously the antennas couldn't, the antennas couldn't handle all that traffic. So then they bought a second, second frequency, which was 1900. And 1900 megahertz, remember 850 was like this, 1900, the frequency is a little tighter, right? And so that doesn't travel as far from the original pole because the signal just doesn't attenuate that far. So they needed for roughly, and again, the design is different in each case, but roughly for every single one of those 850 megahertz towers that went a mile or was every five miles, they would need to place one of these 1900 megahertz towers in between those two towers to get the same signal to cover the area because the frequency was much tighter and went less distance. Fast forward, remember probably about 10 years ago when they told us that our analog television screen is no longer, our analog television is no longer going to work, you needed to go to digital. So the FCC then auctioned off the frequencies that used to be used for analog television. Verizon Wireless bought the 700 megahertz spectrum. So now, after this, 700 is roughly close to 800, right? So it's roughly the same distance. So now on those 850 megahertz towers, they were able to operate three frequencies, the 850, the original, the 1900, which was the, the smaller one, and then they, they bought the 700. And now they've got three, I call it three lanes of the highway, right? Your phone operates, Verizon phone can operate on any of those three frequencies depending on how busy you are. And then a few years ago, they bought what's 21 meg, 2100 megahertz. So now they have four frequencies, 4G, right? So now they are in 4G and there's four frequencies. The 2100 is roughly about the same frequency attenuation as the 1900 that I did, the second one. So they put that, they strapped that onto the, to these things and you've got four frequencies. 5G now is kind of, all right? And 5G is, I don't know where they got this, this frequency and whether they, but it's a much tighter frequency. Do you know what it is?
I don't.
It is, remember that the first, first antenna would go a mile or something like that. The frequencies have, have developed in such a way now, the 5G antenna is only going to go roughly 500 feet from the antenna. And so each one of these antennas is, when you, when you go to install it in a, in a town, these antennas are going to, they're much smaller though. They're about the size of a shoebox. And those are going to go in various locations and service the, the homes and the properties within about 500 feet of those antennas. So that's where technology is going, much smaller but much tighter frequencies. I hope I'm answering your questions.
Sure, yeah.
5G is being rolled out. I don't know, it's a little bit different than cell towers. It's, it's more of a, although it'll operate on your phone, it's, it's more, it's almost like it will probably, in your minds, replace more of the Time Warner internet service. It's more of an internet-based service, but it will be faster than fiber. But it was only going to work if you're within short distance of the antenna and your antenna is very fragile, meaning trees and things like that that block or buildings are really going to block it because it's a really sensitive frequency.
So given the fact that, and you say in your proposal here, that the density and the terrain prevent propagation, why wouldn't you put it in the center of the lot even though aesthetically right away it's not pleasing? Or do you have to mitigate that by cutting down trees and stuff like that to do that?
Yeah, it's not really serving the Columbus Center property per se. It's, it's geographically, it's sort of in the, it's in the location where it is and it's going to spread out from there and it doesn't, that being in the center is not going to help the project. In fact, the apartments are, actually the pole is closer to the adjacent buildings where the users are in this corner than they are, say, in the middle of the, from a, from a network perspective, it won't make a practical difference to be in the middle of the lawn, although you might be able to give the coverage to go a little further because we're over the corner here.
Right.
But again, it's, it's mostly aesthetics and practicality. Put the thing in the corner of the lot than it is from our perspective.
So down the line, and this is getting off the top, you know, to end with that, if you go to this 5G thing, this service, is that going to be affected by trees and terrain more so?
I think it's more sensitive. This, this will, yeah, this, this antenna here will be affected by trees and buildings, you know, per se. You wouldn't put this thing right in amongst a tree that would block it.
Yeah. But you're not asking to mitigate that situation with the trees that are on the berm just west of it?
No.
Okay.
No, I mean, we think it's in the location that it needs to be to provide the function to the overall area. I think in 5G, I think the goal for 5G and it's talked about in the, in the nation, is that a lot of these antennas that we talk about, they're the shoebox size or that are going to be placed so that 5G are hopefully going to be on utility poles, the primary location, I think will be on utility poles in the right of way. So, you know, above the primary will be a little antenna the size of a shoebox and there'll be some antenna mounted, some equipment mounted to the pole. That's probably the main source of 5G service moving forward.
Yeah, thank you. Just one last question. You did say in your paperwork that you're responsible for tearing this down when the life of it is over.
Correct.
What is the life?
Yeah, what is the life of that?
They started putting these things up in about 20, well, I've been representing Verizon for about 15 years. I think I know of two occasions when a, when a pole came, an antenna facility came down. We need to add them more than take them down. And, and for whatever reason, they took a couple of them down because they wanted a better location, but they would remove them. But, so it doesn't happen generally, but the, you know, many of these facilities have been updated, have been operated for 20 or 30 years. I don't anticipate that once this location's up, they're going to, unless technology goes in places that we can't even contemplate that they're going to take this thing down. It is possible that they, what we're seeing more is just like your computer at home after three or four years, you know, there's a new computer that comes out that's faster and quicker and you decide you want to update that, that computer and you go up and unbolt the antenna and put the latest model of the antenna on. That's more likely what we're going to see because again, they need more antennas than they do less, so they're not taking the antennas down. But again, it's, it's not uncommon for us to acquire it and post a bond for the review.
Do they have, do they have a stated life?
The antennas?
Whatever would have to come down, yeah.
Look, I'm unaware and I don't think they have, again, they're more likely to be replaced because technology gets quicker than they are because they, they, they die or because they're, they're, right? Does that make sense to you?
Yeah.
You know what I mean? So, and they, they are upgrading. I've seen them even as quickly as a couple, three years, oh, here comes the latest and greatest antenna that's got better this and better that. And they're climbing up and replacing that antenna with the one that they have.
All right.
I have a question. Some years ago, we all had TV antennas on top of our office. And I could, I could foresee, my first question would be, is this going to increase the data signal on cell phones? Will this give everyone an increase in their bars of usage?
The answer is indirectly, anybody with, with the overall project, the answer's, there's two, there's two parts to the question. Anybody that's using the existing macro sites that I just scratched you, the 1005 Public Parkway and 1073 Webster Road, those facility, anybody that's, that's used those facilities are going to see an improved coverage because indirectly by these new facilities that we're proposing throughout the town and village, grabbing that traffic in the immediate vicinity of those antennas, thereby relieving capacity off of the main towers and therefore you're going to have better speeds, better access. You press, press send on your phone and it's going to work immediately rather than installing and waiting in line. So everybody in the town that uses those, those, those towers are going to benefit. Those people that are in the immediate vicinity of the new small cell antennas are going to see, you know, incredible speeds compared to what they have today because of their proximity to those particular antennas. So the benefit is twofold. Everybody and then those people close to the antennas are going to, are going to see a quick speed.
So once the public figures out that they can get a better signal by having this device in their backyard, are going to request that you install more of these?
Could be, I'm not.
If you're only getting 500 feet?
That's on the 5G.
On the 5G, well, this is, correct. So if you're only 500 feet with 5G, then I could see every other house getting a...
And it won't be that, it won't be that frequent, but it'll be, you know, it'll certainly be dense, more dense, but again, the impacts are, it's really the size of a shoebox on top of the, on top of the pole. And with the removal that you discussed, I mean, when you look at the installation here, it's, the radio is about the size, is a half the size of a window air conditioner and there's, there's about four bolts holding this thing onto the top of the antenna. It's not, it's really easy to take off and go home compared to the towers that had the foundations of 300, or 300 feet or 250 feet up in the air taking those down. So again, these are basically plug and play, for lack of a better word to describe it.
Do they require any maintenance, once you, once you install them?
Verizon's technicians are usually in the area once or twice a month to check out things. The tower sites more often because there's a lot more to go wrong there, but they're constantly monitoring the system. They will know immediately whether the, if the antenna isn't working and for some reason there's a, and they'll send out a technician to, to repair it. So, you know, they're relatively simple. They really, there's electric feed to it, the radio is operating. When it's not operating, they'll know and they'll send somebody out to repair it. But they will check out periodically as they do all of their sites once or twice.
But there won't be any scheduled maintenance every month or year?
No, I mean, I think it's, like I said, it's pretty much plug and play. I don't think that, again, they're constantly monitoring the network to make sure it's functioning correctly, but it's, it's a pretty unanimous thing with a radio and antenna and, and they will, they do check it occasionally. So again, they're, they're able to monitor remotely, make sure it's operating.
Does it have a backup power source or generator?
No. The macro towers, the, the two of them that we're relieving have that backup power. The problem with the, with the small cells themselves, they're small and there isn't any place really to put a, one of these things. They're there to sort of supplement the system, but the backbone of the system still remains the macro. And if you have a power outage, you're going to need to rely on the existing backbone that's there and not the, the, the small cells that are there because of such, they could never put a generator for, for the small distance. They'd be putting generators everywhere for that. If there's a particular, I, I know that if there's a particular public safety reason why, if you know, if we... know, if we have an extended outage or, you know, hurricane or something were to come through, Verizon's network is here to, and they have people on call ready to help respond. But as long as the macro, they're gonna focus at that point on keeping the macros up as opposed to focusing on these smaller antennas.
Couple of, let me go down the line here. I am not a radio frequency engineer, I'm not a telecommunications engineer. I know you've got 1950, 800, 700, and you'll probably grab a couple more if they ever become available. Here's what I know is, a couple of years ago, we went through a project to take all the antennas off of our water tower and put up this really nice looking antenna, big solid. And I don't know whether everybody guys share with the other telecommunications companies, why can't it go on that? And is this just a distance issue? And if it is a distance issue, I kind of sit a little bit with Carl, we're gonna, we're gonna see more and more of these. You know, what stops us from coming back there over and over again? And we, you know, that was, when I looked through this, and as I said, it's a nice package, but why can't we put it on the cell tower site that we have right here on 250? And you personally explained that, but I'd like you to do it for the record anyhow.
If you look at the two, the two sites that we are proposing to relieve, it's about relieving those sites, so...
So that's Publishers Parkway and?
Webster Road.
Webster Road.
Okay. So these, you can't have the, because those two macro sites are there and they're on and they're in full power, you can't have the micro cells too close to those antennas. So you, the art of design, and I know this because we just went through this in the Village of Ellicottville, they, up on the big hill in the Village of Ellicottville, they have a rather large antenna that booms cell tower coverage throughout the village. And close to that tower is the industrial zone. And they say all wireless telecommunications facilities have to be in the industrial zone or they're not permitted. But the trouble with that is that the pole, the existing tower is right here and the industrial zone is around it, so they put the thing in the right place and now they need to relieve capacity. But you can't put antennas this close to the, right close to the existing tower because the phones immediately around that or the devices in that area are gonna wanna use the tower because it's so close to them and so powerful. And the, and the, putting the antennas here will just cause what I would say confusion with your phone. It won't know where, whether to go to the small micro cell out front or the pole.
I've got a picture of that confusion with my phone, but go ahead.
So the way they design it is they say, okay, if the pole's here in the industrial zone and the far coverage of that existing site is over here, for example, on Elm Street, over by the residences and the school over this way, the way to get proper relief and to use the, optimize the network is to put these antennas sporadically spaced over this area, grabs the traffic that's farthest from the existing tower so that they're serviced by that. And then the tower has a shorter distance to cover.
So it's a distance issue?
Well, it's a proximity and a design issue. So here, the sectors that we are trying to cover are those two sites and the sectors that we're overheating, and I can give you...
Please, I'll take your word for it, it's just, I'm real simple, I go like this, I look at my phone, if I press the buttons and I make the call, the network works for me.
It does.
And it's pretty darn good. And I got four bars right now, so I'm pretty happy.
It's not a coverage issue, it's about how much traffic can the network handle? And that's, that's really what it is about. And that is adding more, adding additional lane to the highway.
Yeah.
It's not about coverage. Their coverage in the village here is just great with those facilities, there's just not enough capacity in that network to handle all the traffic.
So are you having, you vision, and I see some of your paperwork is about co-location, I don't know if that's a term you use, that other companies? Do you vision that happening at this site in particular?
It could.
For these little cell boxes?
I, this one's more likely than being on a utility pole because we're above the primary, there's really nowhere to go, the utilities aren't gonna allow you to put it down in between the telephone company and the, and the telephone company generally. So the only place to go on that is up. Here we have a, we have a new utility pole that we're gonna be on the top of. Is it, is it possible that somebody could come in and install a, something on the tower below us? Maybe, haven't seen it yet, but would never say it's impossible. Could somebody decide that there's an antenna here and they wanna replace the pole with a 40-foot pole, for example, and have their antenna on top, you know, on top of ours or, you know what I mean, stack a couple of antennas? That's possible. Again, I've been doing this for five years with these small cells, haven't seen it, never seen AT&amp;T trying to, anywhere trying to put small cells like this, this is unique to Verizon. So although it's possible, am I seeing it? No. You know, it's just not, not something that we're seeing. So I can't tell you it'll never happen, but it's just, they're not in this space yet and maybe their design is different.
So you have that contractually just in case?
We have that, the right to do it, and we have a, Verizon has a policy generally that they'll allow it to happen if it's feasible and they, they can cut the, they share the expense of putting it, the whole reasonable expense. Again, although it's possible, we would agree to do it, I'm not sure that it's practical in the circumstances.
Carl, were you the planning board?
How was that?
Joe, were you there at your?
Yes.
Were you the planning board? Did they have any reservations planned? I mean, I see they went 4-0, so.
Yeah. I don't know how in depth they covered this as far as the things that we're going through right now, as far as the towers, though, but I'm a retired telecommunications engineer. I was there for almost 30 years, so I know a little bit about what's going on. And one of my questions to you is, it's a very competitive market, right? And you have Sprint, you have all the rest of those that are very competitive with Verizon.
I'm not sure they're particularly competitive with the quality of the service, but I'll give you that.
Well, okay. Yeah, you're right. I use Verizon, so I'm happy with mine, but what's to stop them from, let me answer this first. Will you put some of these devices on the top of telephone poles in the backyards?
The answer is, I don't know, because I'm not designing the network in Webster. I think at some point they're gonna not need to put 5G up. I think if the telephone poles are in the backyard, I don't know that they'll wanna go. If the telephone poles in the right of way, they're gonna, from just what I understand, they're gonna be, prefer to be in the right of way so that they don't have to get onto people's properties. And the right of way is already owned by the public and it's, it's used for utilities and the FCC has recognized that municipalities are gonna have to start, you know, it's a good place for these things to go if you wanna have the up-to-date, most current technology. So I do think that they're coming to the right of ways. How soon they're in people's backyards is anyone's guess, but the community and the residents are gonna have to come to, we're gonna have to think about it differently. If you want the service, the antenna has to be within about, you know, your house has to be within about 500 feet or so. Again, it differs depending on the trees and the topography, et cetera, but roughly 500 feet from the antenna and in your house, on your window, on a suction cup, is a little tiny antenna that takes, and that's your wireless router for your house. That's gonna, that's how it's gonna work. And if you want the service, you're gonna have to come to grips with an antenna, it's gotta be within that distance. And whether that's on an antenna in the backyard, a pole in the front yard, a pole, something in the side yard or some other version of the technology, I think that's what you gotta come, so, you know, do, what's gonna, where's it gonna be? I don't know, but it's gonna have to, if you want the service, you're gonna have to have the antenna within that proximity or some variation thereof. And again, maybe technology will improve and you'll only need to be 2,000 feet away. I don't know, but it's, it's, right now, as we see it, they're roughly 500 feet.
The reason I ask you that is because there, on the telephone poles, there's RG&E, there's Rochester, or Frontier, and there's cable TV. And all three of those own a specific space on those poles, including the very top. And so if there was a device that you wanted to attach to the top of that pole, I could envision them changing the pole size in order to get on top of it.
This happens most of the time, that there'll be a 35-foot pole and we end up with a, replace it with a 45-foot pole or 30 and 40, something, but there has to be the safe space between the primary and the...
Yes, there is.
And the antenna. Not every pole, just so you, for more information, maybe you don't wanna, not every utility pole can be used.
Right.
If there's, you probably know this better than I, but if there's already transformers on the pole, in this town, RG&E won't allow you to put it on, unless you have to find a pole that doesn't have more than, some poles have wires coming in this way and leaving this way, those can't be used. Anything with a transformer or other big weighted material can't have it, so not every, not every utility pole is feasible. And so it's all about within their guidelines, but most municipalities recognize that if we're gonna have these antennas, the best place for them would be on these utility poles that are already there, nobody will notice that shoebox antenna on the top of it anyway, but it takes, you know, some municipalities are recognizing and mending their codes, appropriating villages here, and you'll be set up for 5G to be rolled out in the coming years.
I think we'll see it in all...
Yeah, you know, could be, you still have to get, trouble with these antennas, you still have to get fiber to them, right? So it's gonna be interesting, but you're probably right, we're all gonna have a fiber port in the communications world on our homes, I imagine, you're probably right. Hopefully at Verizon.
Are you gonna do anything with those tree, at that particular location, there are drivers and trees back, it almost looks like somebody went in and topped them?
I'm Dave Ertz with the Webster Columbus Center. Those trees were trimmed this past summer by RG&E's tree trimming crew, so that was not done in collaboration with this project. They are ash trees, and as you know, the ashes are dying fast. To say that they won't come down is, you know, is a possibility, but we have no, we have no plans as property owners and they're not actually on our property to touch those trees.
And we're not, we wouldn't need to take it off of our projects if it came out.
You'll basically leave it there?
Our intention is to leave everything as is.
There is a pole line that's right there.
Yeah. They're in the pole line.
So this is directly, my name's Mark Kulik, I'm sorry, I shouldn't introduce these guys, they're not really... I'm with Philson Technology. There is an actual pole line right there. This pole, the proposed pole, is 10 feet away from the existing pole line. We would've gone on that pole line like you suggested, except for those, those actual poles are not acceptable to put the equipment on due to the transformer, risers and a bunch of other things.
Will you go aerial or underground with that piece of fiber?
It'll, it would be aerial between the, to 10 feet of the pole. It would be too difficult to just drop it down for that.
So would we call this, if we chose to move forward with it, would we call it a telecommunications tower for the special use permit? What do we call this?
Yeah, just as in the application, 37.7-foot tall wireless telecommunications facility.
Okay.
Anybody got any other questions here?
Okay, thank you very much, I appreciate it. Any comments from the general public?
I have one question that was brought up about the, all the poles in the backyard, and this would be up to the village, of course. The idea of putting, instead of the backyard, putting them on streetlight poles that are actually in the road instead, I don't know what your power requirements are.
We might, it's perfectly feasible since some, some poles work.
Yeah, in this scenario, one of the areas we were trying to cover was the residential area right there and does not have any utility poles in that area. And the reason why we didn't look at that was to be consistent with the community.
Well, other areas of the village, the old areas of the village have most of the poles in the front yards.
Correct.
Some of the newer areas in the village have the electric in the backyard, but still have street lighting poles at the road.
So again, those are, there are, there are options to potentially put them on street lighting poles, again, depends on the design and depends on the availability of power and et cetera, so those are potential, possibility, whether you go to design it. How, what this thing looks like on the top of the streetlight often comes into play, et cetera, so I think once that, once you get closer to that, they would look into that feasibly.
But that would be an option, possibly.
Yeah, I've seen it, seen it discussed.
Thank you.
Well, if they're on top of streetlights, you'd have to run your cables all over the place.
They do make designer poles now that are designed to have the infrastructure included in that. So they do, yeah, they're available, they're much, they're, they're much larger typically than the ones that you typically see now. The bases are much wider and that, because the radio equipment goes in the base and it's not the simple colonial streetlights that you often see, they're much wider and different, but again, certainly an option.
Anything else? Very good. Close that portion. Four months to discuss, ask questions about themselves or make comments publicly. Good question. Did you have any concern, first of all, Bill, do we make notice to the surrounding area of businesses, neighbors and otherwise?
Yeah, they did.
Did you have any concerns?
Nobody raised anything to me. If they called, if they, if they raised concerns, they didn't raise it to me who sent the letter.
Okay.
My number was on, my phone number, et cetera, an email or on the, on the email, there was not, there were any communications regarding concern about the project at all.
You sent the letter to the owner of like the apartment complex and if he didn't do, if he didn't pass that information on, then his residents may not even be aware that this is going on.
Not sure, right, we did exactly what you told us to do with regard to the notice and we provided the mailing...
No, I know you provided the notice, but if he didn't, if he didn't notify his tenants...
He probably won't see it much because it's gonna be behind that pole line and they're gonna have great service, so they're gonna, I'm not sure.
No, I know, I just...
Yeah.
I know the building to the south of us, the residents are aware that this is a potential project and they're excited about improved signal. So I interact with those people regularly, I don't know anything about the apartment complex.
Somebody's got any other questions? I'm gonna ask the board to please take an action, one way or the other. Either make a motion for or against it. I think we can wrap both of these into one and we probably should, with a special use variance or a special use permit. And...
You also have to do a secret.
Oh, nice. Thank you. Yeah, we also have to declare, so the planning board didn't address that in their...
Since they really didn't do an approval, theirs was a recommendation, so it's really this board that has to do.
Okay, we see.
I'll make the usual motion that we have the zoning board that feels to be the lead agency in this matter and that is a type two action, which is secret.
Okay.
I'll second that.
Yeah. I'm not sure if it's type two or not.
Yeah, it changes secret.
It may be an unlisted action.
Is that how we should do? Is that how we should do it?
The special use permit is a type, is an unlisted action, but Mr. Baker's correct that I believe the setback is a type 2. But since the special use permit is a, is not listed as the type 2 action, you have to go up with it.
So do it as 2? That'd be the easy way out, one way out.
I, I think if you just, well, right, the setback variance is a, is a type 2 action. So that, once you find that it's a type 2 action, you don't have to do anything else. But the special use permit itself is unlisted, so you have to, and, and the short form environmental assessment form was included as part of the application. So you need to go through that you reviewed the, the form and, and you find that there is no significant environmental impact with respect to granting the special use permit. That would be a negative declaration. So it was attached as, exhibit E is the short form, short form environmental assessment form. And if you go through that, there's 17 different little things. You just got to say you reviewed it and no significant environmental impact. Unless you think there is a significant environmental impact, then they've got to go out and do a, you know, a whole, a whole EIS.
So we're going to do this two ways. Number one, we're going to say that we have reviewed the short form.
Environmental form.
We agree there's no significant environmental impact associated with this project and accept that form. Accept that. And then for the setback, it's clearly type 2.
And that's all you need to do. Once you find that it's a type 2 action, you don't need to do anything else. Because by definition, type 2 actions have no significant environmental impact.
Well, I'll make a motion that we declare the, for this matter, that the power itself is an unlisted action with no negative impact. Is that?
Sure. As determined by a review with a submitted exhibit H or exhibit E. Got it. All right, and? Setback.
I already made that.
Okay, and the setback is a type 2.
I'll amend my first motion to say it includes, that it applies only to the setback.
Okay.
Unless it, there is type 2 on the secret.
And that there's only more to date agency for this, for these actions. Okay, second that?
Second.
Michael, thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? There we go. All right, now we have two things on the table. You have to address the special use permit. You've got to address the side yard setback. The setback will be 30 feet. Or the variance in 30 feet.
You should probably do the variance first because if you don't grant the variance, you probably shouldn't grant the special use permit.
I'll make a motion to approve the 30-foot setback variance for the installation of a communication pole.
Okay.
Seconded.
Seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Very good. Now the second thing that they need is the special use permit.
I'll make a motion to approve the special use permit for the use of communication pole.
As listed in the application.
37.7.
I'll second it.
Seconded. Bill, thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Done. There we are.
There you go.
Thank you. All right, we're going to need this. So you guys are good. Thank you very much. Appreciate your wading through this with us.
Oh, please, I-
It's a lot going on.
What do we got next month coming?
Hey, Jared.
Thanks so much.
Okay. Training and learning opportunities.
Still, the online training-
Okay.
That I hand about, we haven't received anything from spring yet.
Okay, for next meeting, or if you have it with you, can you tell these guys where we all are? Okay, so, let's get the hell out of here.
I'll make a motion that we-
We got a motion from Bill.
Seconded.
Nothing on the agenda next week. Seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None. Thank you.
Okay.